Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We got started a little bit late today. Today is June 21st, 2022, meeting of the Seattle City Council. It will now come to order. The time is 2:06. I'm Deborah Juarez. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Peterson?
Present.
Councilmember Swart?
Present.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Council President Juarez?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we start our agenda, I want to add that at the end of our council business, council will go into executive session, which will be a different call-in number, and I'll make that announcement again as we get closer to the end of our agenda. I'm just letting you know that now. So on our agenda, going to presentations. Today, I have a presentation and proclamation. I'm very proud to present today, proclaiming Thursday, June 23rd, to be the 50th anniversary of Title IX. So just to kind of do an overview of how we're going to do this presentation proclamation with our guests, I'm going to do what is normally called our run-of-show. So this is what I'm going to do, and then I'm going to do it. First, I'm going to suspend the rules, and then I'm going to introduce our two guests. I'm going to read the proclamation, though not all of it. It's 17 sections, and I want to read 10, I think, are, I think, the most important, at least for today. And of course, the proclamation's online and posted. People want to read the whole proclamation. Then I'm going to ask both our guests to speak, but before they speak, we have two introductory videos of each of them that we would like to play and then allow our guests to speak. And then when our guests are done speaking, then I will open the floor to other council members who may want to add, ask questions, or share any other information they would like regarding the proclamation. So that's the run-of-show. So I'll go ahead and start with the actual official agenda. There's no objection. The council rules will be suspended to allow our guests to accept the proclamation and provide remarks, and we'll also have two short videos, as I stated, to share. Hearing and seeing objection, the council rules are indeed suspended. First, we have Jenny Gilder from the Seattle Storm and Jackie McCormick from Rise Above. Welcome to the City Council meeting. I see you both are on the screen. You will be recognized in order to provide remarks to the city and the council and the viewing public. I would like to begin by reading the proclamation. It's attached. Like I said, it's already posted for people to see. I'm guessing our guests already have a copy of it as well. So I want to read just the sections that I had outlined last week about this proclamation. You know what? Sorry about this. Adult children love to call you at work. So let me go and read what I think is very important in our proclamation. Whereas Title IX has, in the 50 years since its passage, expanded opportunities for women and girls in sports and in science, technology, engineering, and math fields, and improved protections for pregnant and parenting students. Whereas in February 2022, the U.S. Soccer Federation, governing body, and the U.S. Women's National Team announced a settlement to resolve the longstanding pay dispute, with the Federation agreeing to pay up, to pay the two teams equally in the next union contract and give the women's team $22 million in back pay. Whereas in Seattle, we celebrate our local women's professional sports teams, including the Seattle Storm and O.L. Rain. And whereas the Seattle Storm and O.L. Rain have demonstrated their impact to give back to their community and influence social change. And whereas the Seattle Storm, "Force for Change," brings together players, the front office, ownership, and partners to focus on five key areas of impact: voting and education, BIPOC youth, amplification of Black women, amplification of LGBTQ leaders and leaders of color, and organizations serving Black communities. And whereas, since 2020, O.L. Rain has formed a strong partnership with the Washington, with Washington's first Black-led philanthropy, the Black Future Co-op Fund, to call attention to their mission to ignite Black wealth, health, well-being over generations. And whereas, in part due to the partnership with O.L. Rain, the Black Future Co-op Fund has been able to grant $1 million to 40 organizations. Whereas, the city is proud to support youth organizations that work with girls, like Rise Above, that provide tailored education programs with basketball clinics at the center to empower Native American youth to lead healthy lives. Whereas, the city of Seattle is committed to strengthening our commitment to women's and girls' sports and celebrating their various achievements, including the Seattle Storm's four national championships. Whereas Title IX must be strengthened and vigorously enforced to protect student civil rights. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city of Seattle will indeed soon proclaim Thursday, June 23rd, to be the 50th anniversary of Title IX. And so with that, I would now like to introduce Jenny Gilder from the Seattle Storm. Jenny is the co-owner of the Seattle Storm, our city's only professional sports team to win four national championships. Jenny is also the author of the book Course Correction: A Story of Rowing and Resilience in the Wake of Title IX. Before I ask Jenny to speak, I would like to share a two-minute video about Jenny Gilder and Title, Title IX that was recommended to our council by Councilmember, Councilmember Truismoska. Can we go ahead with that now?
We didn't have showers. So the first thing that started happening as we started doing practices out there was that people started getting sick. And that was when the idea of a protest started to develop during these conversations on the bus while we were waiting for the men. And it was led by Chris Ernst and Ann Warner, who were really upset that the university wasn't taking care of us as athletes. The alums were calling and writing, saying, "Get those girls showers," in some cases, and in other cases, "Why did you ever admit women?" That was the full gamut of the reaction by alumni. But Yale was basically shamed into having to build in addition to the boathouse. You know, the basics of Title IX haven't changed in 50 years. Title IX is about generating access to educational opportunity. It's not just about access to playing sports, although sports is an important part of it. Really, the law is not being enforced all over the country, in small programs and in bigger programs. There is still a huge amount of discrimination, built-in bias that boys are more important as athletes than girls. So I think in most local environments, there's a lot of work to do to ferret out that discrimination and level the playing field. Even though Title IX isn't about pro sports, without Title IX, you would not have the WNBA. You would not have all the women who get to compete at the Olympic level, at elite levels, whatever sport you're talking about. And then you see all these little girls standing up and getting their photographs taken. And if that doesn't talk to you about what the future means for them, how they see themselves here and start to envision their own futures, that's pretty powerful.
The mission of Rise Above is really to educate, empower, and create some resiliency in Native American youth.
We're going to save that one for when it's Jackie's turn. So with that, Jenny, thank you for the, first of all, thank Councilmember Skata. I believe her husband produced that, and she brought that to our attention. So it was wonderful watching that picture of you in the day. So Jenny, is there anything that you'd like to share with us now? It'd be great.
First of all, I just want to thank the City Council, and especially you, Council President, for helping to forward this proclamation. It's incredibly meaningful. I think not just for the storm and the rain, but for girls and women throughout the community. It really says something about who our city is. You know, I think that video actually does a pretty good job in capturing the fact that the Seattle Storm really represents the success of Title IX in expanding access to opportunity for girls and women. And everybody knows about its impact on sports, but it's really, it goes so much further than sports. Title IX was really about, obviously, access to education. But because girls and boys can go to storm games, they get to see women doing what they love for a living, and they get to just assume that that's how life is. And 50 years ago, that just wasn't the case. It was barely thinkable in the early 1970s that girls would want to play sports, just like boys, much less that they'd harbor the same kinds of dreams of pursuing their passions as paid professionals. But now, look where we are today, at least here in Seattle. We have not just one, but two women's pro sports teams. We have Olympic gold medalists, league MVPs, championship trophies, and, in Sue Bird, arguably the best, most loyal, longest-tenured pro athlete in the city's history. Because of Title IX, we haven't just transformed, transformed access to education. We've transformed our communities across the country. Because now we get all the power and passion of girls and women translated into action, not just on playing fields, but in places like our city council, our vice president of the country, businesses across the country. And I really just want to thank the city for this proclamation and making it possible for the Storm to be part of the community, invest back to support the citizens who live here, and help grow access to opportunity for everybody.
Thank you, Jenny. So don't go. So what I would like to do is introduce them and open up the floor, because I know we probably have some comments from some of my colleagues here. I would like to now introduce our other recipient of the proclamation. That's Ms. Jackie McCormick. Jackie founded an organization called Rise Above, dedicated to developing and nurturing athletic and leadership talent in Indigenous youth in our city and statewide. But before Jackie speaks, we also have a short video about Rise Above, and then I will let Jackie talk about Rise Above and let her have the floor. So can we go ahead with the video for Jackie McCormick?
The mission of Rise Above is really to educate, empower, and create some resiliency in Native American youth using sport as a modality or sport as a platform. And it's only sport because that's what I know, and that's what I did, is I used sport.
Her grandpa and grandma would take them to all Indian basketball tournaments, and with the older girls, so like, high school and even adults. So they'd throw her in there, and you could see that she was, she was ready to play, and she wanted to play. She wanted to show that she was capable of.
You know, when I went off to Illinois State, I stepped foot on campus. I knew that I had to give back. So Rise Above was founded in 2015, but the idea of Rise Above started way before that.
You have to have an example. You got to believe that, yes, I can do this, okay? And she's done it. If you're looking for someone to look up to and see, here's her story, and we need to tell it.
Jackie, floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, again, I just want to say the same thing as Ms. Gilder, is really thanking the City Council, the city of Seattle. But for me, most importantly, Council President Juarez, for not only your advocacy for this, but just really spearheading all the work that you do and making sure that Indian country has representation, because we all know representation matters, and it goes a long way. So, you know, when I think about Title IX and some of the sacrifices, I think it is overwhelming to think about, like, how far we've come, but how far we still have to go. And for me, you know, like, I grew up listening to my great-grandma and talk about basketball and, and being able to play six-on-six, and they can only do half-court, and you couldn't overexert yourself too much. And, you know, my mom, who raised me, was my grandma, not being able to have any organized sports. But we traveled all across Indian country playing basketball, and me watching them be passionate about the game. My great-grandma being the first council, councilwoman on my council for the Nessprish Tribe, like, that's, that's a lot, right? And that all goes back into Title IX. And I think another shoe that I have to fill or had to fill growing up was my Biologicum mom, actually shortly after Title IX was passed, was they won the state tournament for our little reservation town in Lapway, and she was named the very first Idaho State Player of the Year. So through sport, it really has got me to where I am today. And I think all the sacrifices that the woman before us, you know, put into advancing women and not having any discrimination and, and using it as an education, kind of a tool, and sport was kind of a side thing of that. It's really amazing how far we've come, but like Ms. Gilder said, you know, there's a lot of work to be done. And, you know, we take last year's NCAA tournament, you know, the exposure that that got. It was actually kind of baffling to see that. So, you know, I just want to thank everybody. And really, my job for Rise Above is really sharing the message and sharing the sacrifices that the woman before us made, so we have this opportunity. So I had the opportunity to go to Illinois State and get my education for free, using sport and getting into college. So my job is really to educate our kids and really change the narrative for our Native youth, that they can do it. You can go to school, you can play sports, and you can be whatever you want to be. So just really, thank you, and I'm so honored to be a part of this.
Thank you, Jackie. And Jenny, please don't go. I'm going to, wonderful, I'm just going to let, I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues before I do some closing comments. Is there anything any of my colleagues would like to share in, in regards to the proclamation and our guests here today? Councilmember Morales?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jenny and Jackie, for being here. This is really inspiring to hear your own stories and really to see your part of history and turning this Title IX effort into, like, seeing the reality of it, imagined for all of us. I think it's really important, as the mom of a, of an 11-year-old girl who loves to go to the storm games, loves to go watch the O.L. Rain, to know that she and other girls in the city and across the country have that opportunity and can see themselves training, playing, using athletics as a way to advance, to go to college. It's just, it's really important to see and really happy to recognize all of that today. And I will say, I think, as has been alluded to already, there's still work to do, and I think helping young women get to college to be able to play at that level is great. Once they're there, we also need to make sure that they're protected and that they aren't taken advantage of when they're in those settings. So more work to do, but really happy for both of you and for all of the young women that you've inspired. Thank you so much. And thank you, Council President, for helping us get to this proclamation.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments before we close? I have a lot to say, but we have a big calendar, and I am good friends with both Jenny Gilder and Jackie McCormick, and seeing Indian country meet the WNBA and knowing all how it's all connected and seeing that Coach, Coach Lenny, you know, this is just such a wonderful day for me, because all the people that I love and care about and who watch Grove Community, Jenny's part of that, Jackie McCormick's part of that, Rise Above is part of that, and WNBA. But I think the more deeper personal feeling for me is because it's the 50th anniversary of Title IX, and like Jenny was saying, it isn't just about sports. And I still think it's, it's unfortunate that it's 2022, and we still have to fight harder, like, just like the women's soccer team did, to have equal pay, to have equal access, to have the same opportunities that our brothers, our brothers get. I think the statistics, I was looking at, if I'm wrong, Jenny, please correct me, Jenny, that girls drop out at 50% higher rate before they're 12, and boys. And I could go on and on, but the point is, we never encourage our young girls, we need to, to use their bodies for strength and to be proud of it, that it isn't just about the male gaze and being sexualized. I'm just going to say it. That, that's my biggest problem with today. Nothing against the Kardashians, but I really want to see young women use their minds and their bodies and be proud of it. And when we see, when I know, when I go to WNBA games and I watch the Final Four, in fact, I'm always texting with Jackie, like, I could have done that shot. I'm just so proud to see women out there doing that. And when I got to watch Sue Bird playing Climate Pledge, I mean, that just was amazing, to see, to see the Seattle Storm on a, on a big reel in, in the city of Seattle court was amazing. Watching Sue do her last game in New York with that last shot literally brought tears to my eyes. I'm probably a little emotional here. But my point is, that's the kind of inspiration. If that inspires me at 63, imagine it was thus for a 14-year-old girl watching that, saying, "I could do that for a living," and that's how the world should work. So thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you for your contribution, your hard work. I know how hard both of you worked behind the scenes to advance women's sports, to advance women empowerment, to work with young women and young men, and for that, I will always be thankful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So seeing that we have no more questions, we will move on. And again, I want to share with the viewing public to please look for more information on the 50th anniversary of Title IX on our social media, hashtag #Celebrate9Day. All right. So moving on into our calendar, we'll go to public comment. And colleagues, at this time, we will open the hybrid public comment period. For this hybrid public comment period, the remote speakers will be heard first, and I understand there are four remote speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes, four.
And Madam Clerk, how many do we have in person?
Three in-person speakers.
Okay, so we have four remote, and we have three in-person, and we will do the remote speakers first. And with that, everyone has two minutes, and Madam Clerk, I will hand it over to you at this time.
Hello, Seattle. We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on Indigenous land, the traditional territory of the Coast Salis peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder: The speaker meeting ID is different from the general listen line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted, and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue. That is your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You will then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when 10 seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
Our first public commenter for the remote public comment is Howard Gale.
Good afternoon. Howard Gale with SeattleStop.org, commenting on our failed police accountability system. As I speak, the first day of the King County inquest into the SPD murder of Sharlina Lyles is happening. Five years ago last Saturday, the pregnant mother of four was murdered in her home by Seattle Police, just four weeks after Seattle Police, Seattle's police accountability legislation was passed, legislation that instead of providing more justice, provided more death and harm over these last five years. This county inquest process going on today, which had been opposed by the city of Seattle, is the last possible small measure of justice currently offered by those with political power since all other avenues were denied the Lyles family by the city, with the internal SPD investigations deeming the murder, quote, "lawful and proper," unquote, and the OPA not even bothering to investigate. Five years ago, council members promised to find, quote, "a new way of doing things that we actually, where we actually get different results," unquote. Council President Juarez, you said at the time that, quote, "We will demand accountability, transparency, and community oversight and not allow this to happen again," unquote. Yet our city went on to kill Albert Fredericks Jr., Danny Rodriguez, Ryan Smith, Terry Kaver, Derek Hayden, and the person still unnamed on Beacon in January, all people experiencing a behavioral health crisis like Sharlina, all, quote, "lawful and proper," unquote. Council members, you promised after Sharlina that the results would be different, yet, and they have been. They've been worse. If you want to pay justice to the memory of Sharlina Lyles on the fifth anniversary of her murder by the SPD, then embrace the future of police accountability that dozens of other U.S. cities have post George Floyd by creating direct community control of police abuse investigations, discipline, and policy. Look forward to a future of justice and not backwards to a mythical past and promises that we now know, five years later, were clearly false.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Reddy, and Jonathan's followed by Sue Black, who is listed as not present. But go ahead, Jonathan.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jonathan, and I live across from Gasford Park. Last night, my neighbors and I got woken up by a volley of gunfire coming from what we believe was the homeless encampment next to us. Well, fortunately, nobody was hit by these bullets, as far as we can tell. I mean, I just, I'm really rattled by this. This is the third time in the last year that a shooting has occurred within 100 yards of where I live. I, you know, I encourage this council to, you know, please, you know, continue with the plans that had been to, you know, start moving the RVs out of the encampment. You know, there's, you know, there's always been a lot of, you know, disruption from that encampment, but last night was just really, I'm really kind of shook by that. I'm really, I really don't feel safe here. And I just, I want to live in a place where there's just, there's, there's no gunfire pointed at where I live.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Haynes, and that is our final speaker that's present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, David Haynes, District 7. Why is City Council appointing landmark and historical preservation boards tasked with preserving dilapidated inflated buildings from a racist deregulated era? We need to tear down all the rundown, obsolete, flawed design, watered-down building codes from a racist era and rebuild 21st century first-world quality homes, commercial buildings, and schools. Stop preserving modern third-world slums built by people who treaded on Chief Seattle's people. It's offensive to celebrate a time of evil racism that treaded on Native Americans only to want to preserve that time with reminders of the buildings used to enforce an economy that discriminated against locals. Secondly, this council and mayor and police chief are still running interference for evil drug pushers exempted from jail, destroying lives daily. And some of these people are flipping out every night across the street from my apartment in Pioneer Square, making life a living hell. Please resign your positions of power. You're doing a disservice to the innocent community subjected to an uncivil war while while council lists evil predators as low-level misdemeanor crime, never to be dealt with, imploding society, justifying a boycott of Seattle.
Thank you. We'll now move into in-person public commerce. We have three speakers signed up. Our first speaker is Marguerite Richard.
Well, anyway, it can hang from the side. Maybe I've started a new trend. My name is Marguerite Richard, and I am concerned somewhat about the policies and the procedures of taking our minutes away, not letting us be seen as before, and I don't know what else to do but to keep speaking out and push it forward. Also, my condolences go out to the uh family of Brenda Frost Taylor, a former employee that is now deceased. And I don't know how much pressure on the job that she had working for the uh Health and Human Services Department. But you know what? I'm gonna say, like the song says, "Say what you have to say, 'cause you only have a minute with sixty seconds in it." And that clock don't mean nothing to me when you're oppressing us, repressing us, supressing us, and depressing us just because of the color of our skin. And I'm gonna keep on talking about it 'cause that's what all the other leaders talked about. Now they had Juneteenth, and then the man from Spokane said, "We may have some obstacles, but we free now." Is that true? Can you send me a document? Well, I don't have to come down here. No more talking about where my face is planted, on a screen, on a wall, on a map, signs saying Black Lives Matter, no questions, let there be no questions, and you know, hey. Well, yeah, somebody in the audience said Nazi pig, okay? I don't know what she is. But I know one thing, you better not run up. You better not run up as long as I had to live on the face of this earth from kindergarten all the way through, yeah, high school, ding dong, the little bell that rings to check us. I'm not having it, okay? I'm just not.
Our next speaker is Michael Fuller.
Yes, first I thank my God for being here. But I have a serious problem with all nine of them. I don't see their faces down here like in Redmond and the mayor, but not here. Then you had our justice there in the gun to the safe, two minutes? How can you have the authority over we the people and we pay your salary? See, pimping ain't easy. But see, all of y'all working under color state and federal law will be prosecuted. 'Cause I'm trying to put you in federal penitentiary. You're openly violating the Emancipation Proclamation of eighteen sixty-three and the Immigration and Nationality Act of nineteen sixty-eight that was signed by President Ronald Reagan. And that Immigration and Nationality Act of nineteen sixty-five that was signed by President Lyndon Johnson. And the Old American Ijuah fourteen nineteen sixty-five that was signed by President Lyndon Johnson. And the thirty L O Y period, L period, A period, L period, R E V nine seventy-seven nineteen ninety-six and ninety-seven. Meaning no one is above the law when it comes to the American with Disability Act. All of y'all getting where you fit in at the time of September the eleventh. You understand? Look, look at this city council. It's so sickening. I'm looking at all these cockroaches, and ain't nobody look like me that's in, that's speaking for us. Wait, wait, what gives you the right to come in Black Lives Matters community? Black Lives Matter, but this is not the changes or the dream, Black Lives.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Zimmerman. Mr. Zimmerman?
Uh, why you don't show my face, my sign, and my yellow David Star? It's little bit don't have sense for my understanding. And I speaks here three thousand times. Why change right now for last two years? It's exactly what has happened right now. Where is council here? They talk to us from what? From heaven? To me, this look like evil talk from heaven for hundred forty thousand dollars part-time job. So I want to speak right now about something what is, I think, absolutely critical. Your point right now, people, is this appointment come from civil right? How you can appoint a people from civil right? What is, you don't have civil right here. You know what it mean? It's absurd by definition. I don't understand what's going on. Why you doing so strange? You know what it mean? You look to me like a white Nazi Gestapo psychopath. It's exactly who you are. Where is you now? Why you cannot sit here? What's going on? How you can appoint people? What is, I don't see. Where is this people now? Where these people who you, who, who appoint? I never see how they faces, you know what it mean? What does this mean? What's going on? When you stop in acting two half year, you suck blood and money from us, make from us a slave, you know what it mean? Seven hundred fifty thousand idiot, a pure slave, what is follow you hundred percentage approximate? When this will be stopped? When you will start to be a, a, again, a normal America? I don't see this become fit. There's two black people in one Jew for two months, you know what it mean? And you never show us faces because I'm a Jew and they are black. What is going on? Who you Nazi piece of garbage? Yes, another ten second. I repeat again, you're pure Nazi Gestapo psychopath. Yeah, another three second, Nazi.
Okay, Council President, that concludes all of our registered speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So with that, we have heard from both our remote and in-person um folks that wanted to provide public comment. And now public comment is closed. We'll move on to the agenda to the adoption of the introduction and referral calendar. If there's objection, the introduction referral calendar will be adopted. Not hearing or seeing no objection, the introduction referral calendar is adopted. Moving on to the adoption of the consent calendar. Uh we will now consider the proposed consent calendar. Are there any items that any council member would like to remove from the um consent calendar? Uh my understanding today is that in the consent calendar, this is from Councilmember Morales's committee, there are four appointments from the Neighborhoods Education, Civil Rights, and Cultural Committee. Two for the Historic Seattle Preservation Development Authority Governing Council, and two for the Landmark Preservation Board. Now, thank you, Councilmember Morales, for moving those forward. Um, hearing no objections and not seeing that anyone wants to remove anything from, oh, from the consent calendar um has been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Salant?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold? Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed?
Thank you. The consent calendar is adopted. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes and legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? Moving on into a, into our agenda, we have adoption of the agenda. There's no objection. The agenda will be adopted. Hearing or seeing no objection, the agenda is indeed adopted. Moving on to committee reports, uh quite very briefly, uh we have six items today. Item number one is mine, and items two, three, and four are Councilmember Morales, and items five and six are Councilmember Lewis. Madam Clerk, beginning with item number nine, will you please read it into the record?
The report of the City Council Agenda Item One, Council Bill one-two-zero-three-four-seven, and ordinance relating to city employment, commonly referred to as the Second Quarter Twenty-Two Employment Ordinance.
Thank you. I moved to pass Council Bill one-two-zero-three-four-seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. As sponsor of this item, I will address it and then open up the floor to comments. Brief, bear with me for a minute. Uh, the council authorizes certain personnel actions through quarterly and employment ordinances. Today, we are considering the Second Quarter Twenty-Two Employment Ordinance. This ordinance came straight to full council and was not referred to committee. Last week, Karina Bull on our central staff provided a memo of analysis for your consideration. If passed, Council Bill one-two-zero-three-four-seven would authorize the Seattle Department of Human Services to, number one, return seven positions to the civil service system, and number two, exempt one position from the civil service system. It also amends Seattle Municipal Code Section four point one-three point zero-one-zero to reflect the classification, civil service changes to these three positions. There are no direct costs associated with these personnel decisions or actions today. Are there any comments on this bill? Not seen or hearing any, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Salant?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed?
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, will you please affix my signature to the legislation? Um, moving on to item two, I understand that Councilmember Herbold is not here to us today. I understand Councilmember Morales is the co-sponsor will be addressing this. Madam Clerk, can you please read item two into the record?
Agenda Item Two, Council Bill one-two-zero-three-four-eight, and ordinance relating to appropriations for the Seattle Municipal Court.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales, so is yours.
Thank you. Uh colleagues, I did mention this bill at briefing last week, uh but to remind you, uh Councilmember Herbold and I are co-sponsors. Um, the adopted budget includes a proviso on eighty-eight thousand dollars in the Seattle, uh Seattle Municipal Court's budget that was intended to fund subsidies for users eligible for electronic home monitoring. Uh, the proviso was intended to restrict spending until the court provided to the Public Safety and Human Services Committee baseline data from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one to understand the current usage for misdemeanor defendants. Um, the court recently indicated that they do not have the data, nor does the electronic home monitoring service provider, um though they will begin to track it starting in twenty twenty-two. Um, so, because the court has exhausted their existing funding for subsidies and cannot spend more without the proviso lift, um we are uh moving with that proviso lift. Uh, otherwise, only those able to pay will be able to access this service. Um, so, we are moving this legislation forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Are there any questions? Wait, I'm sorry, I gotta move this first, then I can ask. Um, or did I do that? No, I did not. I moved to pass Council Bill one-two-zero-three-four-eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Uh, Councilmember Morales already spoke to this. Are there any other comments from our colleagues? Councilmember Morales, is there anything else you want to add before I uh ask for the vote? Nope, I'm good. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Salant?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Morales?
Yes.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed?
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, will you please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Um, item number three is also Councilmember Morales. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please read item number three into the record?
The report of the Neighborhoods Education, Civil Rights, and Culture Committee Agenda Item Three, Council Bill one-two-zero-three-three-six. An ordinance relating to historic preservation, imposing controls upon the Katon Revels House, a landmark designation by the Landmark Preservation Board. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales?
Thank you very much. Um, colleagues, we did hear in my committee about the Katon Revels House. Uh, it was built in nineteen oh-two. It's located in the Capitol Hill neighborhood and was home of the prominent Katon Revels family, Horace Katon and Susie Revels, who were the first owners and editors of the Seattle Republican, which was the city's first black-owned newspaper. Uh, the home itself is associated with a significant chapter of Seattle and Washington black heritage. Uh, the family fought for civil rights and used their paper to advocate for racial equity in the city. Um, and the Landmarks Designation Board um has uh recommended that this house receive that designation. It was unanimously voted in my committee that it do pass.
Okay, well, I'm trying to do three things at once, and that's probably not a good thing to do while you're trying to chair a meeting. Um, so, uh, are there any other comments for Councilmember Morales? Okay, not seeing any? Um, let's go ahead with the vote then. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Salant?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed?
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, please affix my signature. Thank you. We'll move to item number four, which is also Councilmember Morales. Madam Clerk, will you please read item four to the record?
Agenda Item Four, Appointment two-two-five-one, the reappointment of Matt N. Penn-Butter as a member at Landmarks Preservation Board for a term to August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The committee recommends the council confirm the appointment.
Councilmember Morales?
Thank you. Um, uh, Madam President, I think that the issue with this is that um we read the wrong appointment number into the uh committee report, and so I just want to read the correct appointment number, a reappointment number, which is Appointment zero-two-two-five-one. Uh, and it was recommended that the reappointment, unanimously recommended that the reappointment be approved.
Councilmember Morales, I think you need to move it. I think you, you have-
I would like to move Appointment two-two-five-one.
Thank you. That is the, Councilmember Morales has moved to amend Appointment two-two-five-one by substituting the notice of appointment in a point, in the appointment packet for the amendment notice of appointment as presented on the proposed amendment that is on the agenda. Is there a second? Anyone?
Yes, we're-
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. It's been moved and seconded to amend the appointment by substituting the notice of appointment in the appointment packet as presented on the agenda. Councilmember Morales already addressed that. Are there any comments?
I do, I should also say, uh, Council President, that on the appointment packet itself, he's listed as a member and not as the historian. Uh, and so, we need to um clear that up too. He is a member of the Preservation Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, before I go to the roll, is there anything else, Councilmember Morales? No, thank you. Okay. Um, that being said, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the amended appointment packet?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Salant?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Juarez?
The motion carries and the appointment is confirmed. Madam Clerk, do I need to state the, please affix my signature language?
Not to a confirmation, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to item number five. This is Councilmember Lewis. Madam Clerk, can you please read item number five into the record?
The Report of the Public Assets and Homelessness Committee, Agenda Item Five, Council Bill one-two-zero-three-four-one, and ordinance relating to Seattle Parks and Recreation, authorizing the Superintendent of Parks Migration to execute for and on behalf of the city a concession agreement. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, this is a fairly straightforward ordinance, uh per um uh Parks requirements. They need to come to the Seattle City Council for oversight and- They need to come to the Seattle City Council for oversight and ratification of vending concession agreements that they reach. This particular contract is a concession contract for vending machines and park facilities. The vendor being selected is one of two final bids that were selected as part of a competitive RFP. The committee was satisfied and unanimously reported this legislation out for council ratification here today.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Are there any comments or questions for Councilmember Lewis? Is there anything you want to add before we go to a vote, Councilmember Lewis? That's a no?
No, Madam President.
You don't have to say Madam President, but I didn't know if you had your speaker on or your volume on. All right, so with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Salant?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Orez?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes. The chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation. Moving on to item number six, which is also Councilmember Lewis. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number six into the record?
Agenda Item Six, Council Bill 120342, An Ordinance Authorizing Seattle Parks and Recreation to Enter Into an Agreement with Seattle Preparatory School to Replace the Montlake Playfield. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Madam President. This is an item that we had a fairly lengthy discussion on in committee regarding a deal to between Seattle Parks and Seattle Preparatory Academy to replace a turf field in the Montlake neighborhood of the city. This is an extension of an existing arrangement from the last time the turf field was replaced in collaboration with Seattle Prep. Under the terms of this agreement between Parks and Seattle Prep, as is outlined in a attachment to to the legislation, the terms of agreement, which in a matrix illustrates the different public benefits and the cost being assumed by Seattle Prep as part of this arrangement, that Seattle Prep will assume the full cost of replacing this turf field in exchange for having priority access to the turf field for March first through June fifteenth annually during peak times for their sporting events and at other additional times as fits their schedule of athletic activities. In exchange, further for that deal, and this is one of the more different terms from the previous decade of having this arrangement, Seattle Prep will provide a minimum of fifty public service annual, public service hours per year with the goal of helping to fill gaps in community offerings in the Montlake neighborhood and beyond and facilitate particularly programming to include the creation of lacrosse programs for middle school-aged children from low-income families, partnering with Montlake Community Center to provide tutoring services by Seattle Prep students, assisting Northwest Child Program dedicated to supporting people with disabilities and providing recreation opportunities for its students. We had a fairly lengthy back and forth about the details of this of this deal and also the extent to which this is a more unique arrangement at this location and with this particular partner, or whether it portends broader policy direction and decision by Seattle Parks and Recreation. I know Councilmember Morales has submitted some questions to Parks. I don't believe we've had a response for some of those inquiries yet. But I support getting a report back on those questions from the department as we go forward in pursuing these kinds of partnerships about the maintenance, replacement, and activation of our public spaces. The committee did ultimately report this bill out unanimously with an abstention from Councilmember Morales, given that there is no significant increase in concession from the city in this agreement relative to the previous shared use agreement. But there is an increased amount of benefit in Seattle Prep providing fifty public service hours annually, which is the, from what I understand from talking to Parks and from the committee, the only new term relative to the last time the city entered into this agreement. So given that, the committee does recommend passage of this, and I don't have any other opening comments.
Councilmember Lewis, can I ask you a question? When was the, when was the other agreement? And I'm starting to remember this one. Was this after two, after twenty sixteen?
I believe that the initial agreement, Council President, was longer ago, because this is at the, we're now replacing the turf field from its twelve years of useful life. I think it was two thousand eleven.
Okay.
So I believe.
Yeah. With another turf field that we did one of these concession agreements. And good job getting the public benefits piece in there, because that's something that we worked on, so.
Yes, you may be thinking, Council President, about, I believe, a similar arrangement in the South Park neighborhood.
Yes.
Was done in the past decade that is, you know, similar, but with different parties.
Right, thank you. Are there any other comments from my colleagues before I ask, Councilmember Morales?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for the report, Councilmember Lewis. As Councilmember Lewis indicated, I did send some questions. I had a lot of questions in committee and sent some follow-up questions. My questions are really rooted in the concerns that I hear from my constituents about the lack of access to neighborhood parks and to playfields for neighborhood children and the exclusive nature of the use of these. In exchange, the exclusive use at sort of, you know, peak after-school hours for students. So I did send some follow-up questions to the Parks Department regarding the public benefit for use of our parks by private institutions. I haven't received those responses yet, but I have asked similar questions and have been asking for the last two years about these agreements that we have with private entities. Candidly, with the budget shortfall, the upcoming parks funding deliberations, I think it's important that we put a real intentional equity lens on our funding priorities. And I just feel at this point without sufficient information on how this benefits diverse and low-income communities. This is not something that I can support right now, so I will be voting no today.
Thank you. Councilmember Salant?
Thank you, Council President Orez. I will also be voting no on this contract in addition to the comments made by Councilmember Morales. I just wanted to add that our parks are a treasured public resource that should be available for all. This contract gives a private school exclusive use of the playfield for a substantial part of the day, which unfortunately means that it will be unavailable during those hours for anyone else, such as students from Seattle Public Schools. New AstroTurf on the playfield is no doubt a real benefit. However, I do not think that outweighs losing public control of the space for so much of the day. So for that reason, and in addition to the reasons already stated, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salant. Are there any other comments before I hand it off to Councilmember Lewis to, oh, Councilmember Nelson? No, okay. Councilmember Lewis, do you have any closing comments before we go to a vote?
I'll stand by my initial remarks and queuing this up, Council President, and we can move on to the vote.
Okay, I'm going to support this. As a former chair of Parks and for six years in the MPD and talking to Councilmember Lewis, these concessions, these agreements are pretty straightforward. And we do require, and I know for a fact in the last six years, particularly the first six months that I chaired that, we bolstered up the huge public benefits piece. And of course, the race, race and social justice initiative analysis is a big part of that. And there was some pushback in the beginning, but eventually Parks and some of our other groups came to realize that, I think you saw this when we did the Woodland Park Zoo contract, that we really needed it to see what is the public benefit to allowing a private, the private sector to use the public benefit. And even if it is a private school, these are still young folks in our city wanting to participate. And sometimes it's basically that's the only park that's there. So I'm going to go ahead and be supporting this because I understand the work that Councilmember Lewis had to do for doing it for six years to move these things forward. So with that, I'll be supporting that. Are there any other comments before we move to a vote? All right, not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Salant?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
No.
Council President Orez?
Aye.
Four in favor, two opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes. The chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk.
Excuse me, Councilmember President, or Council President Orez. I believe we may need five yeas votes for a council bill. It's very possible that that one did not pass at this particular point in time.
Okay, so the, so what would say, we had two noes and?
And four yeses. And I have to check the charter, but I believe we need five council members in favor to pass a council bill. And then I will also follow up with what to do after this.
Okay, so what should we do? I'm concerned about putting it on the record that it failed if we have to come back if we're not sure on the actual rules. Can we, is there a way that I can take this with Councilmember Lewis's permission and move this over to next week till we have some confirmation on the particular procedural rules? I would rather do that than accept the vote as it is right now, because I did not know that. And I don't know if Councilmember Lewis did that. Can we do that?
Yes, I believe we can bring it back to the next council meeting without any further action.
Councilmember Lewis, is that okay with you if we can move this over to June twenty eighth?
No objection from me, Councilmember Orez.
Okay, so what we will do then is we will take item number six until we get some clarification on the clerks on how many votes we need to pass this or if it passes or fails. And we'll move this to June twenty eighth, which is a Tuesday, and we'll bring it back then. And then, Madam Clerk, you can advise us, and Mr. Councilmember Lewis can share with us any additional information. How's that?
Yes, thank you, Council President.
Yes, thank you. All right, so after that, let's move on. On our agenda, items removed from the consent calendar. There were no items removed from the consent calendar. Adoption of other resolutions. There are no other resolutions to be adopted under K Other Business. If there's objection, Councilmember Herbald is excused from today's council meeting. Forward with that. And then, right now, we will go to, let's see, I am not adjourning yet. We're going to go into executive session. So on the agenda today, we'll go into executive session in which you should have.
Council President Hodges, I apologize for interrupting. If we go into executive session, the council will not go back into session, and we need to resolve this fail bill before we go into executive session.
Well, we decided that the failed bill will be reheard on June twenty eighth.
For that to happen, the council must, someone who voted on the prevailing side must move to reconsider the legislation.
Okay, so would that would be Councilmember Lewis?
The prevailing side would be someone who voted no.
Oh, I see.
That would be the Councilmember Morales or Councilmember Salant.
Councilmember said so moved.
Thank you.
Are we good?
We'll take a roll call vote on reconsidering council bills. Sorry, I've put away all my papers. I'm reconsidering the council bill.
Okay. So that was Council Bill 120342.
Yes, it was. And would you like me to take more on reconsideration?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Point of clarification, an aye vote, a yes vote, means that we still support the bill.
It just, it says that we are, you support reconsideration.
On the twenty eighth?
Aye.
Councilmember Salant?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Orez?
Yes.
Six in favor, none opposed. Then we have the bill to reconsider. And Clerk Sanchez, do we need another motion put on the June twenty eighth, or can we just bring it back on June twenty eighth?
It has to be brought back on June twenty eighth per the city charter.
Great. We've just done that, correct?
We have.
Okay, so we can move on to, we can move on to our executive session. Correct?
Yes.
And for the council, council members, you should have gotten a separate link for the executive session. Madam Clerk, I know that we kind of went back and forth on this, so my understanding is again different. We will go to executive session, and I'll read those instructions in a moment. You should have your own separate link, council members, and then we will come back for me to adjourn. Is that correct?
I will adjourn at the end of executive session. You won't adjourn before the executive session. We're just moving into an executive session, but it's on a different Zoom meeting. It's not a different meeting.
Right, I understand, but I'm going to, okay, okay, I'm going to go ahead now and read the instructions for executive session. We will now move into executive session. As Presiding Officer, I'm announcing that the Seattle City Council will now convene into executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss pending potential or actual litigation. Please note, the executive session participants will need to disconnect from this Zoom meeting link and log onto a separate Zoom meeting link to attend the executive session. A few minutes will be allowed for this process to take place before the executive session begins. The executive session is an opportunity for the council to discuss confidential legal matters with the city attorney as authorized by law. A legal monitor from the city attorney's office is always present to ensure the council reserves questions of policy for open sessions. Let's see, I expect the time of the executive session to end. We're looking at thirty minutes, so can we do this, everybody? It is three thirteen. Can we all be back at three fifteen? And then from there, we'll have executive session for thirty minutes. Correct? Madam Clerk? Yes.
Okay, good. The other link, thank you.
Okay, if the executive session is to be extended beyond that time, I will announce the extension of the expected duration. At the conclusion of the executive session, the city council meeting will be adjourned. The next regularly scheduled council meeting is scheduled for June twenty eighth at two o'clock. And with that, we will go into executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.